Recording.
Good evening, everybody. Can I welcome everyone to the regular meeting, the July tenth, twenty twenty-five Trinity County Planning Commission Meeting? Since I'm not there in person, can I ask Commissioner McIntosh to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thanks a lot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Commissioner McIntosh. And I'd like to open it up to public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the Planning Commission any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Barrett. I'm Rhoda Kane from Trinity Center. I really appreciate that each and every one of you are willing to do this incredibly thankless job. It weighs heavy on my soul, the duty to stand up and fight for the marginalized, the disenfranchised, and the stigmatized. I stand here today to encourage the Commission in all of your decisions to stand up for the freedom of all people. I stand to speak for the right to live on our land, to make an honest living, and a life off the sweat of our brow, and if we're lucky, someday retire. None of us are free until all of us are free. We deserve to be treated equally under the law, free from government overreach. As our Planning Commissioner, our property rights are in your hands. Please help us and protect and preserve our rural agricultural lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment in the room?
Hello, my name's Michelle Taylor. I am from Coffee Creek. I am here to hope that you will support the resolution that's been brought up by the staff.
So it's public comment for items that aren't on the agenda?
Okay, I'll wait. Thanks.
Any other public comment in the room?
Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a sort of general public service announcement.
Absolutely.
Not related specifically to this agenda item. So we received a number of comments sent to a particular planning staff member's Trinity County email address, and she asked that I point out to everyone, and I figured I would do it now while most folks were in attendance, that on the agendas and on the website, it lists a specific email address to submit comments to, and that is info-planning@trinitycounty.org. So going forward, if public comments could please be submitted to that email address. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other public comment in the room?
Chair, this is Rhonda Vanderplu, Deputy County Counsel. If I could just do a point of order here.
Sure, go ahead.
I know I haven't spoken with you all.
Sorry, we can't hear what you're saying.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So I just.
So we can't. So can you just speak up a bit, please?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding is you, you as Chair are appearing remotely, and to proceed on this per AB two four four nine and AB two three oh two, which was effective January first of twenty twenty-five. First, I need you to describe the emergency in approximately twenty words without any personal medical information, why you have to appear remotely, and then the rest of the board must take action to approve your members, your request to appear remotely. It's just a matter of housekeeping. We need to take care before we proceed.
No problem at all. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I, I, I'm out of town. I have a family emergency I need to address. It came up last moment, and I apologize for short notice to the Commission, but I did let the county know that I would not be appearing in person. I'm here in Zoom. Family emergency that needed to be attended to. Thank you.
And now the board just needs to take action to approve your request to appear remotely.
Okay, is that by vote?
I'll make a motion to approve Chair Barrett's appearance remote for a family emergency.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's second is it?
So do we have to have a vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to do this for yours.
No, we.
Nor mine.
Well, but. Yes, I, I emailed staff. I emailed staff that that was not done properly.
Aye. Aye.
Well.
If, if we have an affirmative, we can go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Rhonda. Thank you, Commissioner McIntosh, for pointing out it wasn't done for other people, but I have no problem being the first in the process. So thank you very much for your advice, and thank you to my fellow Commissioners for the vote of confidence. Mr. Brower, public comment in the room?
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. John Brower from Junction City. I just wanted to extend a great big thank you to Ed Presley. He announced his resignation at the last meeting, and I think most of us that have been paying attention to Trinity Matters for a long time were, would view Ed as really a guy that kind of swooped in wearing a cape with a big S on his chest during a very troubled time for planning and community development, cannabis, and lots of things. And in, in my eyes, Ed did a really good job of cobbling together a workable department and surrounded himself with a whole new crew of professionals that had really stepped up. And the, the planning and cannabis, I think, other community development services really took a big step up under his leadership and seemed to flow much easier and, and and in a more forthright way. And, and the people I know that had projects pending, I think most would agree that he did a really good job, and he learned fast, and he seemed to let his, his subordinates do their jobs without micromanaging. And, and it was just great to see that whole county department kind of spread their wings and fly instead of just continually falling out of the nest time after time. So anyway, if you're listening, Ed, a great big thank you and best of luck with your next steps, and just want to wish you and your family the very best. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment in the room?
Chair Barrett, Lisa Wright, Lewiston. Just to kind of segue on that, I think that the Community Development Services is a very important, critical department for Trinity County, and I want to make sure that you all continue to support, you know, the efforts of staff to make sure additionally that that department be allowed to be built out. There are several vacant positions. It's really critical to the future tax base and development, and it's at a very critical time with our general plan and zoning code being updated, that we have the adequate resources to process new development applications, to add to our tax base, to develop housing, and all to be done in a timely manner. So please be mindful as we have this vacancy here that we need this to be built out and to be given director-level department acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comment in the room?
Good evening, Board and Staff. Ben Kellogg, Weaverville. I'm actually here looking for guidance. I've been to Development Agency. I've been to the Board of Supervisors, and no one can give me a straight answer on our blight ordinance. As you all know, when you come into town, there's school buses, there's all kinds of crud all over the place. Welcome to UC Davis, smoking ashtrays, and I'm told that our blight ordinance has so many gaps that it cannot be enforced. And I come to the Planning Commission because I think that's your area. I've been doing research. The city of Red Bluff has a wonderful blight ordinance that appears to check all the boxes of what we can do to have our code enforcement finally enforce blight in, in Weaverville. Get rid of the trash, get rid of the buses that certain people that we all know just throw everywhere for sale signs and things like that. I was told that I could come to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission has the authority to direct staff to open up our blight ordinance and work with County Council to close those legal gaps so that code enforcement can do their job. And I come to you begging for that because we all want to talk about revenue. We all want to talk about tourism. Tourists don't want to come into a place and see what we look at every day and that we are just used to seeing and just throw up our hands and say, well, nothing can be done. And that's what I'm being told. So hopefully you all can do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I will say that you are correct. The Planning Commission does have discretion to agendize an item. I agree with everything you said. I'm not typically supposed to respond to public comment. If it's not the right venue now, I will address it later, but I would direct staff to agendize that item for discussion. Any other comment in the room? Not seeing any. Is there any comment on Zoom?
No, not, no hands up.
Thank you. We're going to close public comment and go with our regular calendar. We have one item tonight. That is the Community Development Cannabis, D E V dash two five zero five dash T C C one seven point four three dot zero five zero eight seven. We're looking for an ambiguity, ambiguity determination. This item is continued from the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting. So since this item was continued, we've already all up to date on the staff recommendation, and we have public comment addressed. We are not going to open up public comment for this item. All items, a public comment was at the last meeting. So I'm going to bring it back to the Commission for a motion.
Do we, since the staff report has changes in it, do we have the opportunity to ask technical questions?
Absolutely. Since the staff recommendation has changed, absolutely, we have the opportunity to ask technical questions. Thank you. Commission?
So in, in reading the staff report and the new language added, there's a paragraph that says, while discussing the data request with Water Board staff, the following questions were received. And so I'm just clarifying the questions about this. Those are from the Water Board staff? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the Water Board staff is asking whether, anyway. Okay, so then the new information in the staff report says there are two current licenses within limitation areas. And so is that up to date?
So I do want to point out that I neglected to include the Lewiston CSD in that evaluation so to, to give more specific information. As I said in the staff report, I was, I did get a list of Water Board enrollments under the twenty fifteen order from the Water Board, but I wasn't unable to plot those all into GIS. As it relates to active county licenses, we have one in the Weaverville CSD, one in the North Lake area. Currently, the, those subsets of the, what I would refer to as the North Lake area are not differentiated in parcel viewer. So I'm not sure, but I will just refer to it as one in the North Lake area, one in the Weaverville CSD, and four active licenses within the original Lewiston opt-out, the Lewiston CSD.
So, and do we have any applications in-house for licenses within these limitation areas?
To my knowledge, we have several expired, previously active county licenses within the limitations areas. One active application under, currently under review.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, again, I'm just trying to figure out the scope of the issue that we're talking about, how, how many potential licensees are being affected.
If I, if I may, I just want to add, you know, although I was unable to plot the one thousand and thirty-two enrollments into GIS, I did do a cursory review based on the APN prefixes and came up with an estimate of a hundred and eighteen parcels within the limitations areas based on the APN prefixes. There might actually be slightly more than that because I did not confirm the eastern portion of the Lewiston CSD as it relates to APN prefixes.
So potentially there's a hundred and eighteen parcels that would claim, that could claim that they had an exception from the limitation areas from that timeframe. Some, something around there, just, you know, a rough estimate.
Agreed.
There's no timeframe according to the ordinance of when they could say that they wanted to claim that exception?
No.
Okay. So potentially, we could be talking about over a hundred parcels that this would affect, our decision would affect.
I agree.
Okay. And then if, if this Planning Commission does not support the staff recommendation, which limits the claim for an exception to parcels enrolled in the Water Board permits? If instead we kind of go with the legal parcel as far as who can claim that exception, that would include contiguous parcels?
Agreed.
So potentially those contiguous parcels could each apply for a license of some sort? I don't, I don't know if they would meet the E I R or anything, but could they apply for a license?
Rough, rough math, you know, we could probably assume that each parcel has four parcels that surround it. So at a minimum, we go from one twenty to six hundred. It's sort of impossible to calculate the, the full extent of, of, you know, how expansion could occur if the Planning Commission were to not approve the resolution.
Okay, thanks. That just helps me figure out kind of a scope of the issue in terms of how many, how many parcels might be affected. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorpe. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Can you point me to where in seventeen point four three zero five zero, where in the code it explicitly states that expansion of canopy or adding continuous parcels is prohibited from those who qualified under the twenty fifteen Water Board Order?
Hence the reason for the ambiguity from my perspective. As, as I, as I view it, given that specific APNs need to be listed on a Water Board enrollment, that is the basis, you know, for, for my perspective on it, which is that if the APN wasn't listed on the enrollment under the twenty fifteen order, then it doesn't qualify for the exception because the Water Board standard is quite clear that in order to enroll in the Water Board, you have to list the APNs to which you are enrolling.
Thank you for that. I see in the staff report in the, the Water Board, I know, pamphlet, says for cannabis cultivators in the general order applicants only. It says, enter your assessor's parcel number of which you are applying for the coverage under the Cannabis Cultivation General Order. If your cultivation is on more than one parcel, the parcel must be contiguous next to each other. If the parcels are not contiguous, or must apply separately under Cannabis Cultivation General Plan Order for each set of continuous parcels. For water rights and a single, for water rights, a single register, registration is sufficient. So it sounds like that's implying that if you have contiguous parcels, that you just put one APN on there from the Water Board.
And I think the most important piece of that to point out is that that form, the reason that I included it was just to give another example of the fact that since the original twenty fifteen North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board Order, all APNs have needed to be listed on Water Board enrollments. That specific page and document that you're referring to is related to the State General Order, which was not adopted until twenty twenty-one and then re-adopted again in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And that, that, that clause does not exist on the questionnaire or applications under the twenty fifteen order, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Let's see, some other questions I had. Are licensed, licenses who qualified under the twenty fifteen order subject to different licensing processes or fee structure than any other cannabis cultivators?
Are you asking about the fee structure related to Water Board enrollment?
To Water Board enrollment or enrollment in the county?
I, I really can't speak with much clarity on how exactly the Water Board calculates their fees, but my general understanding is that it's a combination of the slope and the total disturbed area, and that creates a tier, and the fees are based on the tier for Water Board fees specifically. As it relates to county-like, county cannabis cultivation licenses, the fee is the same regardless of when the parcel was enrolled into the state Water, the North Coast Water Board program or the state, you know, subsequently the State General Order. So if that answers your question.
And this is specifically just for the opt-out zones, right? Because the definition of contiguous parcels under the same ownership being a legal parcel is is the same, or let me rephrase. Outside of the opt-out zone, a cultivator can apply for a license with one APN with, on a contiguous parcel. And that is considered separate, different for in the opt-out zone?
So just to clarify, there are a variety of opt-out zones that have been established. The, within the scope of the discussion for this ambiguity determination, it applies only to the original opt-outs as listed in the applicable code section. The other opt-outs which were approved subsequently have specific clauses that prevent expansion or increased intensity of the use.
That was explicitly written into the ordinance?
Correct.
And are there any farms that have moved or expanded within the opt-out zone prior to this discussion?
Say that for certain. If what we're talking about when we're referring to opt-outs is these specific limitations areas, what I can tell you is that we have received one application, to my knowledge, to expand from a ten thousand square foot cultivation site to a one acre.
But there has been no farms that have moved to different APNs from two thousand, from the initiation of this license, of the licensing process to now?
Are, are we referring to the limitations opt-outs? Again, I, I do not know at all prior to twenty twenty-one program shutdown, program restart in twenty twenty-two. To my knowledge, there's only one specific application that has attempted to add additional APNs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other technical questions for staff from the Commission? Okay. Commission, do we have a, a motion on the table?
I, I, I'm just curious. So for public comment, is it possible to have public comment from people who haven't spoken before? I'm just wondering.
No, I think the opportunity was there at the last meeting, and since this is continued, I don't believe that should be applicable. Do I see County Counsel come off mute?
Deputy County Counsel Rhonda Vanderplu, as I understand, a public comment was closed at the last meeting. So it is up to your discretion if you'd want to reopen it, but it was closed at the last meeting. So it would require reopening of it if, if you feel that's justified.
Thank you, County Counsel, for that advice. I am not going to open up public comment. Commission, do we have a motion on the table for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission for D E V dash twenty-five oh five, the ambiguity determination, with one correction that we update the individual to attest. It's currently listed as Ed. Thank you.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners? Discussion?
Sure. The ordinance is pretty, pretty clear and straightforward that there is restrictions on cultivation within these boundaries. And there's only one sentence. It says, with an exception to this limitation, is allowed for applicants who have submitted for an application for enrollment under the N C R W Q C B Order twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, et cetera. This ordinance, this, this, this was a long battle for over years. Many of us were at these meetings. If there was any limitations that were to be put on it, it would have been put in the ordinance. It would have been explicitly put in the ordinance as it is in other portions of the ordinance. So for us to interpret this sentence with intent or their intentions or the spirit of the the community or the, how it was written, I, I, I don't know. It, it seems like this is very straightforward that farmers have, are limited unless they were, they applied for the Water Board at this time. Outside of that, there's no specific limitations put on them at all. I mean, this is very clear, in my opinion, as well as the definition of legal parcel is crystal clear as well. And so if there isn't any more limitations put on the farmers, the small handful of farmers, then the definition of legal parcel that applies to all other cannabis farmers applies to the farmers in this opt-out unless explicitly stated.
Yes, I would agree. It seems to me it would be more in the, in a community-type thing to redo the. thing to redo the opt-out, as far as having a community discussion and changing rules, if they want to change rules.
There was, there was a long discussion. It was a long drawn-out process for each one of these. That ship has sailed, so to speak.
Gotcha.
But it's not that it's the, that the Board of Supervisors and the community can't bring it up for an updating.
So I would agree and disagree. So I would like to point out, under limitations, under Section A3, one of the limitations was that you had to have, you couldn't get a license if you had a legal parcel that was without a legal dwelling. And that's the reason that the definition for legal dwelling was amended to, when we were going through all those discussions. It was amended so that it included contiguous parcels. Then, the intent was someone could own several parcels and they could have their cultivation area on one parcel and their house on another. And so that's why, you know, in order to allow people to not have the, the house on the same parcel as the cultivation site, the licensed site, that's why that definition says contiguous parcel. It wasn't intended to include other cultivation activities. So it wasn't intended to broaden the location beyond the water board APN number. So I agree, I agree with Duncan. I mean, to me, it's explicit, but it is explicit for what was enrolled in the water board. It's not explicit for the parcels that they may buy in the future, or the parcels that, you know, are half a mile away, that are still contiguous. The intent was to the grandfather, and that's, I know that's not the correct Planning Commission term, but it was to grandfather existing cultivators in these limitation areas, the opt-out areas. It wasn't intended to allow them to expand, to add a lot more licenses on other parcels. It wasn't intended to allow them to move closer to neighbors and businesses. If you read the reason for the limitation areas, it's because it can create a public nuisance. So if we allow the broader definition of legal parcel, which allows all these contiguous parcels, then we're letting them move closer to businesses, move closer to neighborhoods. And people over the last seven years may have made improvements to their business. They may have bought or sold houses with the assumption that the, there was a specific parcel that that's where the cultivation would occur. And so we're taking away the property rights of those people that made that assumption. And so that, that bothers me. We're not saying that you can't get a license. We're just saying where you are eligible to apply for a license is the parcel that was enrolled in the, the water board. So we're not prohibiting them from doing what they want with their property. We're just saying, this is what was enrolled. This is what was understood to be grandfathered, and therefore, this is where you can have your project.
If I may, it's a little difficult for me to see people if they're finished talking there, so I don't mean to step on anyone, but I have a few comments. So we can't go on intent. Intent, you know, lots of things are, we can go by what's written. I also want to point out, Commissioner Fall, just to your, one of your last comments about taking the rights of the neighboring property. What about the people that own the property that has the legacy farm there? So we're not concerned with their rights? We're just concerned with the neighbors? This issue has been resolved years ago. The ordinance is clear on this legal parcel, whether the intent of it is, whatever the intent is, we can only go by what's written. And what's written is crystal clear on this matter. There is, there is no room for, for any possible way to misunderstand what is clearly written. So intent, your intent might be different than mine, but what we have in front of us in black and white, in writing, stated, is what it is. There is, there's, there's no gray area on this. I understand we're concerned with neighbors and concerned with this, but what about the people who invested their life savings, their children, upright members of the community that are here for the long haul and have been through a horrendous, horrendous process? The goalposts have been moved continuously. These people are legacy farms, are grandfathered, as you stated earlier. Leave them alone.
If I may, Chair?
Absolutely, Commissioner Duncan. Commissioner McIntosh.
Yeah. We were, we were at these meetings eight years ago, when the opt-out zones were discussed, and the, the reasons for, you know, having these flags in the sand of people that were pre-existing. These farms signed up for the water board, establishing that those properties were cultivating properties before there was even a license available. They, they put a lot at risk to say that we are here and we are cultivating, and that was over 10 years ago. Talk about property rights. Every property lost their rights in the opt-out zones to grow cannabis commercially, other than a very small handful. And frankly, it was written around an arbitrary boundary. There is no official cannabis overlay. This was the, this is what, the Coffee Creek Fire District? That goes all the way to the top of Scott Mountain, all the way out East Fork? And the reasons are because of, I believe it states, population density? This is, this is the problem, by not creating an explicit overlay for cannabis. There's all sorts of problems with, with these opt-out zones, but the community as a whole accepted this, because that was the will of the community up there in general, with the caveat that these existing farms that have been here for possibly decades, would have the same rights as any other farmer. So it was a compromise. It was a giving up the rights of all other properties to be able to cultivate, other than these small handfuls. That's my two cents.
Any other commissioners have a comment before we go to a vote?
Yes. So I apologize, I do have a disclosure I should have made earlier, so I apologize for that. I did speak with Supervisor Cox and Drew, as well as County Counsel on this issue between last meeting and now, to receive some input. So I guess, I, one of my things with the natural resources and the water board permit, it's about the water and tied to what the water source is. And so to me, if you're applying and you have one water source identified, and you're going to use that same water source on the neighboring parcel, okay. You know, you're just moving over a little bit, and you're still using the same water source. But if you're moving eight parcels over, are you still using the same water source? You're gonna dig a pipeline and run it through your parcel? That's a larger impact. So I don't agree with trying to change the water sources. If it's the same water source, that kind of makes sense to me. But that's, that one's kind of bugging me a little bit about, about this.
If I may, the water board controls water discharge, not water availability. And, and there are rules, county rules, state water right rules, from using water on one parcel APN and moving it to another. That's frankly out of our jurisdiction. If they're able to do whatever requirements it takes with Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State Water Board, whatever state agency that controls the water, that is, that is their right to do. That is not our place to, to regulate.
Agreed.
In my opinion.
I agree with the Chair. It seems very clear. I don't see any ambiguity at all.
I would like to put forward a competing motion, if I may, Chair?
Absolutely. Please.
I move that licensed cannabis farmers within the opt-out zones, who meet the exception identified in Trinity County Code Section 17.43 dash 050A7, are subject to the same regulations and entitled to the same rights as any other licensed cannabis cultivator in Trinity County, unless explicitly written into the ordinance.
A second.
So what does that mean? I mean, does that mean that you're using the definition of legal parcel?
The same definition of legal parcel that is used for all other cannabis farmers. That was explicitly put into the ordinance. The water board order was merely a placeholder. It was not intended to be used as regulations of how much water, how, where they could be. It was merely a placeholder that shows that this farm, this property, has been in cultivation.
Right. It was, it was to show who was existing at the time our ordinance took effect, and who qualified to be grandfathered. It was a, this point in time, these are the current enrollees, and so these people can continue in the limitation areas. But in my mind, it's on these specific parcels.
And if, and it could have said that. It could have said, an exception is, to this limitation, is allowed for APNs who submitted applications, but it is for applicants.
But they only applied for a specific parcel. They didn't, they chose not to apply for all the parcels they owned.
They applied, and in the legal definition, in County Code 1743, we know what the definition of legal parcel is.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I've had some significant discussion with County Counsel about the legal parcel definition. If the commission would like, Rhonda Vanderplu is online, and she can weigh in on that definition, if that's at all helpful.
Thank you very much, but I believe it's crystal clear in.
I would like to hear that, Mr. Chair. I would appreciate hearing County Counsel.
No, no problem, Commissioner Fall. County Counsel?
Yes, Rhonda Vanderplu, Deputy County Counsel. Drew and I have had many conversations.
I'm sorry, we still can't hear you? Is there a way to turn her volume up?
I've got, I've got it turned up all the way on my side. Is that anybody?
Is it possible to speak closer to the mic?
I'm on top of it. Can you hear me now?
No.
Wow. My apologies.
A little better.
Okay. How about now?
Much better.
Great.
Oh, good. Okay. So what Drew and I have been discussing over the last several months is.
So you're gone again.
It must be my connection. My apologies. I, a legal parcel by statute, state statute, is not defined by its APN, and I think you all already know that. And that's kind of the situation we have here with your, your code defining a legal parcel as one with an APN. An APN is only for the assessor for tax purposes. It does not immediately or automatically make it a legal parcel per the Subdivision Map Act, or any zoning or other ordinances, to be a legal parcel that somebody could build on. So as we talk tonight, the legal parcel you're talking about is per your code for these applications. Just want to make that clear. That does not make it a legal parcel per the Subdivision Map Act, or state statutes. I hope that helps.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Yes, the, the definition of legal parcel to, that we're discussing is within the cannabis ordinance, cannabis cultivation ordinance of legal parcel.
Correct. That's how Drew explained it to me.
And that's what we're discussing tonight.
Thank you very much for the clarification. So a grandfathered farm in an opt-out zone are subject to the same regulations and entitled to the same rights as any other permitted farm in the county. So we have a motion and a subsequent motion. Commissioner McIntosh and I seconded. So do we want to have a vote, or is there more discussion? Okay, how about a vote?
Would it be possible to restate the second motion?
Yeah, sure. I move that licensed cannabis farmers within the opt-out zones, who meet the exceptions identified in Trinity County Code Section 17.43.050A7, I think that's the correct one, are subject to the same regulations and entitled to the same rights as any other licensed cannabis cultivator in Trinity County, unless explicitly written into this ordinance.
But doesn't that override the ordinances for the subsequent opt-out areas like Rush Creek Estates? Because you're, now you're taking away their more detailed limitations.
Commissioner Fall, just to clarify, Commissioner McIntosh has a motion, and I am seconding for the second time, just to clarify, before we have a discussion. So please, go ahead.
I apologize. That was my discussion. So my question would be, if this motion passes, aren't you overriding existing ordinances for subsequent opt-out areas? Rush Creek Estates, Lewiston Expansion, and so forth, that have different limitations than the original opt-out areas?
Yeah, in my last portion of the motion.
We're gonna need a pause. We've lost Barrett.
Yeah, can you still hear me? Can you still hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah, I realize that, and I'm trying to get it to restart.
There we go.
Okay. Is that working for you now? I apologize. I'm not quite sure what happened. So please proceed.
If I may, the last part of the motion states, unless explicitly written into the ordinance. So if there's details in the other opt-out zones that are explicitly written in there, that were vetted by the Board of Supervisors and adopted, then those hold. But unless, yes, there we go. I'll just leave it at that.
So we just need to correct it to just apply to these three, to the Weverville Community Service District, the Lewiston Community Service District, and then the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District, Attorney Center, Community Service Districts zones. If you.
I mean, I, and maybe I'm confused, but I don't think it, there, I think that holds for all, all opt-out zones unless, I mean, are you saying that there was, I mean, the opt-out zone regulations, limitations are spelt out in this ordinance? Is there another ordinance that spells out more limitations?
Yes.
Yes. So like Rush Creek Estates and the Lewiston Expansion, there's an additional ordinance that has more intent and more restrictions for that area. And so that's why we should focus on these three that don't have those specifics drawn out. So those other ordinances do list, can they expand? Yes or no? That kind of. So those other ordinances do list, can they expand? Yes or no? That kind of stuff. And it does, at least in the Rush Creek Estates and Lewiston Expansion, when it does list that, um, licenses can transfer with the ownership of the parcel. Um, so in respect to the ambiguity, the question is for these three areas because the others, it's more defined within their ordinances.
Yeah, I, I support that amendment into the or- my motion.
Aren't there four? Yeah, I'm sorry. Aren't there four? You have Weaverville, Bucktail, Lewiston Community Services District, Weaverville, Coffee Creek, Trinity Center. There's four listed in A seven.
I see in the staff report that Weaverville Community Service District, Lewiston Community Service District, Coffee Creek Volunteer oh, Fire District and the Trinity Center Community Service District.
It looks like, uh, Bucktail subdivision within the Lewiston Community Service District. And so Drew, the date for the Bucktail subdivision is that the, uh, Lewiston Community Service District by January fifteenth, twenty seventeen. So the, that Bucktail section is just included under the Lewiston Community Service District.
I am not certain about the Bucktail section. I do know that there were two, um, subsequent standalone opt-out ordinances. Kind of adjacent to the original Weaver, um, Lewiston CSD.
Can you make sure that you're on the mics so that people on Zoom? Thank you.
There were two additional opt-out ordinances subsequent to this original limitation section um, that are adjacent to the original Lewiston CSD. And I could attempt to pull up those ordinance numbers and dates if that's helpful, but it might take me a moment.
I mean, based on, um, the information in the staff report, it, it looks like it reads that the exception is allowed for these four areas.
Chair, may I pose a question at this point?
Absolutely.
Um, so just to kind of guide staff, um, a- as far as evaluating applications for Trinity County cannabis licenses going forward. Um, although I did not specifically call it out, um, as a question or something to be, um, resolved by this ambiguity determination. The quote from Water Board Staff does evidence one of the questions that I've also had. And so it says, "An exception to this limitation is allowed for applicants who have submitted an application." So it would be helpful to understand what applicant we're referring to. And is it the same applicant who has submitted the Water Board enrollment application that also needs to be the applicant for the cannabis license? Unfortunately, applicant is not defined in seventeen four three. So, you know, i- if the direction is to, um, you know, take action on this at this point, um, I don't know if I should bring that back as a separate item for us to contemplate, but that is again a part of the ambiguity that I hope would be clarified in terms of, you know, staff's ongoing evaluation of applications.
Well, the Water Board comment says it doesn't make sense to apply an exception for a given site if the original applicant has moved on. So their opinion is that the original applicant is who is the applicant?
And, and this really, the regulations are for a county ordinance. Um, and the Water Board's concern is with water discharge, right? Who, no matter who owns it, they want to make sure that the water is not, any discharge is not polluting the environment. So let's consider what applicant means, right? So the applicant who applied, who submitted an application for the Water Board, right, let's say is entitled to the same rights as any other licensed farm within Trinity County. That applicant is allowed by right to sell their farm. And so therefore it goes to a new applicant. The, 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 the sta- the, um, flag in the sand was for these particular parcels. And so if they have rights and those rights are the same as any other right, then, um, it is able to be transferred and sold.
And I don't disagree with that perspective. However, um, there is no way to move a historic enrollment into someone else's name currently under the state general order. No, it would be a new application under the state general order for a pre-existing location.
But again, that is, in my interpretation, um, getting away from the intent and the, the word of the ordinance. The ordinance was for the property and for those properties and the property owners who, um, were in the, in the process, that are in the ordinance, are in the, in the program. Right? The, the, you know, there's processes to change the Water Board from one property owner to the next. Again, the, the Water Board really primarily is just concerned with water quality.
Right, and it's, it's a new enrollment.
It's an, it's a new enrollment. Yeah, every time the property is sold, as is the right of the original applicant, it must go to, they must reapply. And of course, they're not going to be able to reapply for the two thousand fifteen Water Board. It would be the most present Water Board as of two thousand twenty-five.
And hence my question, is that then the applicant for the local cannabis license?
The applicant? I'm not sure how to process that. I think so. I think so. Let's hope for discussion.
Well, that's where we hope the general plan and cleaning up the ordinances will help us clear any of that ambiguity in the future. I'm not sure if it pertains to the item on the agenda tonight. Could be an agendized item to talk about later, in my opinion.
I mean, it's, it's a transfer of rights. Do, does this applicant who sold their property? Do they, does the next applicant have the same rights on that property as the prior applicant? It, I believe that is what your question is.
My question is who's the applicant?
Who is the applicant?
Doesn't say parcel to your point.
It does not.
Commissioner McIntosh.
It doesn't.
I'm sorry, is, is someone speaking?
I'm sorry, I'm asking for an exception just for a, a detail in fact. It's Lisa Wright, just to offer it because there's a little bit of kind of misinformation clarity might be helpful. Specific to Water Board enrollment and change in discharger, the WDID number doesn't change. It's not a new enrollment. The W, it's a change in discharges, a different process, a different form that you use. So the WDID number stays the same.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Commissioners, to bring it back on task, we have a motion, we have a subsequent motion. Do we want to start a vote?
Yes, I motion that we vote.
Perfect.
Chair Barrett, your vote?
Uh, so we're voting on the subsequent motion first, because we have two motions, don't forget.
Okay, my bad. Let me get to the first one.
No, we're voting on the subsequent one.
So Chair Barrett, your vote?
On the subsequent motion, my vote is aye.
McIntosh, Chair Ma- uh, Commissioner McIntosh, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, your vote?
No.
Commissioner Flights, your vote?
No.
Commissioner Harper, your vote?
Aye.
Rita, too?
Impulses.
So a question for County Council then. Did the commission just take action on the ambiguity item?
What I would ask is that it be read into the record exactly what was amended, so that the record is very clear to the public. Can, am, am I coming through?
No, Rhonda, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
What I would ask is that it sounds like what was brought to you to, uh, deliberate has been amended to some degree.
You, you get loud for a second and then you seem to drop off.
How crazy. Um, it needs to be read into the record what was amended. Exactly what you just approved, that does not reflect what is in the proposed resolution brought before you by staff.
So she's saying it needs to be read into the record exactly what was approved, um, that was not currently listed in the the resolution that was brought to us by staff. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was an amended, it, it, from what I could hear, it was an amended resolution, not the exact language in the, uh, staff recommendation resolution brought before you that the public was aware of.
I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing that one.
If I may clarify, I believe what she's requesting is that the resolution itself, um, be amended and, and that needs to be included as part of the motion because you need to make, take an action by resolution. So the, you know, part of the motion needs to be including how to modify the resolution that is, that is part of this agendized item.
Okay.
A question for Council. So you're saying that this has to be concluded with a resolution of some sort? Correct, that we just can't have a motion?
You, you can have a motion, but as I understood, it was not the exact resolution that was provided by staff. It, do I have that wrong? Are you?
Correct.
Well, are we just providing direction to staff at this point and not? Not.
Yeah, so my understanding, yeah, my understanding is that we're not proposing to change county code by resolution, which is what the resolution would have done. Instead, we are simply providing direction to staff through Commissioner McIntosh's motion?
Um, my opinion would be that the, the motion that you made, um, I guess could be considered direction to staff, um, but I would disagree that we are not changing county code. We are by resolution clarifying the ambiguity. So perhaps, um, that is more clearly what needs to be a part of the motion as it relates to the specific item, um, rather than making a motion that doesn't address the item as agendized.
But the issue we have is that, um, you know, if you change the now therefore be it resolved, and if you change that to Duncan's motion, I don't believe that you have the findings of fact that supports that.
How, how is this different from any other motion we've ever voted on? If we do, if we disagree with the recommendation, we put up a subsequent motion and we vote on it. Why, why all of a sudden is this one different?
Because we make it more clear as to what actually it is in the resolution that we're changing or agreeing to or not agreeing to. And so we just need to look at the resolution as it's written and make the adjustments um, so that it reflects the, the intent.
And or to simplify, the motion could be to deny.
To deny the staff's recommendation?
We could have voted on my original motion.
To not approve the resolution.
To not approve the resolution, um, and that would leave it
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous. And so, um, we've, the commission is providing clarity on that. So is it in the resolution, the section A and B? I've never written a resolution, so you might have to, uh, you know, help us, walk us through this process. And so is it A and B where the details of the
Correct.
Resolution? Okay, so maybe we could just go through this, um, sentence by sentence.
Well. And like I said, the, the findings of fact are in the staff report, so the staff report conflicts the motion that was just approved, so I don't see how you can use this.
Agreed.
I can make a s- suggestion that you could do a notice of intent to bring it back amended as uh, provided by the commissioner, but the public was not aware.
Rhonda, you, you were loud at the beginning and then you dropped.
Yeah, we can't hear, we can't hear you.
And, and I'm not able to put it in the chat either. But if you're amending it, the public should have.
We could, we could pause for a moment and she could try calling back in.
Whether you're able to go off Zoom and call in on a, a better connection?
I think she may have, uh, be attempting to do that presently.
Thank you, Drew.
Uh, during this time, can we take a five-minute recess, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are we, uh, back from our recess? Are we back from our recess?
Sorry, Chair, we're back.
Okay. Okay, so Commissioner McIntosh, did you have any, uh, thoughts about how to reword it?
Yeah, thank you, and, um, granted, um, I'm not, um, I have experience with this process, but, you know, this, there's some, uh, new territory for me. And so I could offer a finding that this new resolution is consistent with the plain text of the ordinance. Just like have that finding present that.
Agreed.
And, I mean, I mean, we, we voted upon the, um, on the motion, but we could provide clarity, um, on that motion, um, such as, you know, that I move that we reject resolution number two oh two five dash nine and then proceed forward with my, um, stated motion. Would that provide more clarity, or am I just digging myself deeper into the mud?
I, I don't know if Reta has successfully called in. And if so, I think she has some guidance.
Thank you.
From the commission.
Reta, are you available? I mean.
Here, I have her. On a phone, she needs to press star six.
Need to start. Reta, you'll need to press star six to unmute. Or star seven. The Zoom just shows board chambers, it doesn't show the phone number coming up. It should show the phone number up in the.
The upper right.
We, yeah, she's, uh, we're showing it online, but she does not.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. The crazy thing is I had to bring audio back on on my computer, so I don't know what's going on to get rid of that awful noise. What I would recommend as best practices is that you, uh, not approve the reso as presented tonight. Do a notice of intent to bring it back with the amended language for the commissioner, um, because the public needs an opportunity to speak to any changes you make. You, you shouldn't make changes, um, from what the public expected to have approved or disapproved tonight. Um, they need an opportunity to speak.
Reta, how is this different, how is this different from any other, uh, vote we've had?
Because as I understand, the way the reso is presented to you right now is not what you want to approve. Is that correct?
What we're saying is, is the resolution as presented by staff is not what we voted on. We had a subsequent motion to, to clear up any ambiguity in the text, to simplify it, to as stated within the ordinance. I'm not quite sure why we're having to jump through these hoops for this particular item. It's no different than any other item we voted on for the last six years.
Well, as I said, I'm, I'm new to your, your system, but in my experience, what's brought before you and what was printed on the agenda and what the public had viewed is not what you're approving. You're making a change during the meeting, so that needs to come back. So you, as presented, you're gonna deny it. If I underf- if I follow you correctly, and then there could be a, a notice of intent to bring it back with the amended language as, as provided by the commissioner. If that's different than you've done in six years, that's a very different process than any jur- jurisdiction I've worked in.
If, if I may, Chair, just.
Absolutely.
Just for clarity. So there's recommendations from staff, and those recommendations, um, are brought forth with a resolution if we, um, choose to accept it. But these are recommendations from staff. Um, and so if we proceed forward with a different interpretation, um, and our own motion, this, um, has to go back forward through with a new resolution um, that will be voted on in terms of the clarity of, um, how the resolution was written. Because like, this does not need to be voted upon again, other than what the wording?
Correct.
Um, county council, is that what we're talking about?
Right. What we're talking about is what was put on the agenda, what was presented to the public is not what you want to approve tonight. So the public needs a right, has the right to know what you're changing and have an opportunity to be heard on that.
So.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Stitch. Oh, may I make it, uh, possibly another motion and we can vote again?
Um, well, I don't know if, I, I appreciate, um, I, I'm just trying to figure out if Reta is trying to tell us we have to vote on the motion as presented, so we have to vote on the initial motion, which failed. We already voted on a subsequent, so the vote's gonna be the same on the initial, but that is what was, was presented to the public.
No, you had a motion that passed, so Commissioner McIntosh made a motion that was passed. You can reopen that vote if you have a second from the same voting side. And then if you choose, then we can revote. Um, I think what you, your intent is, um, is that you may just want to vote on Commissioner Falls' original motion.
Th- that is what I'm trying to get clarification from. Um, thank you very much, Commissioner Flights, that's, um, this is new to all of us. Uh, we've never done this in my history on the commission, so, um.
My apologies. Um, one of the things you can do is you can withdraw the amended motion if you want to go back to the original.
But the original, and so let's say the original motion does not pass. That provides no clarity on the ambiguity. I am, my motion is providing clarity on the ambiguity that we have been here for two meetings discussing.
Correct, so if you were to withdraw the second amended motion, deny it as presented, give a notice of intent to bring it back with direction to staff to reflect the changes that you requested for a vote, but that way it's transparent to the public what you're actually voting on, which is not what was presented by staff tonight.
Can, can we withdraw Duncan's vote and everything, and then can I, can we make a subsequent motion? Or do we have to back all the way up?
So I think, so someone who voted in, like Commissioner Flights pointed out, someone who voted in favor of Commissioner McIntosh's motion and make a motion to essentially withdraw that or revote on that. And then you readdress, thank you, and then you can, um, go back to my original motion, uh, decide whether or not you want to approve the recommendation of staff on the resolution. And then if that doesn't, um, get approval of the plan in commission, then as, as the counselor is pointing out, then you need to renotice kind of a, a future discussion on, on a plan B.
So, so then are we gonna renotice all meetings for the last six or seven years? Cause that hasn't applied previously before. We've made a subsequent.
Is being asked is in the past, we have been able to amend resolutions in motions. Is that no longer the case? Right, I think, I think Commissioner Barrett, Chair Barrett, I think maybe it's a fine point, but what we've done in the past is actually amend resolutions, not actually totally start all over in the opposite direction.
So, so then as an option to amend the resolution and vote on that, is that acceptable? Or, I, I guess my concern is, what does this open up the county to? Uh, any, any, any motion we've voted on the last six, seven, eight years, however long I've been on the commission, six years, um, now, given the guidance we've just been provided tonight, that any, any vote or any subsequent motion we made is no longer valid? I mean, I think that is a slippery, slippery slope. Where's that, where's that?
It wouldn't invalidate, it wouldn't invalidate prior actions because there would have to be a challenge to it. So, no, you don't have to go back and do that. And if I am giving you a practice that's never been practiced before, it's just a suggestion. If your practice has been to amend on the fly and move forward with approval, I've just given you my advice, you, you can take, take it or leave it.
We, we have amended resolutions, but we've never totally rejected the staff recommendation and done essentially the opposite. That's, I think that is a major change, and that would be why you would want to allow, you know, more public input and be transparent according to the Brown Act.
Well, well, sure we have. Staff has created recommendation and we have voted against the recommendations. I think also the fact that, uh, uh, council just stated that it would have to be challenged, I think that's open season. So anyone that's watching this on Zoom or anybody that's watching this goes, hey, guess what? The last six, seven years, they didn't adhere to the rules, let's challenge it. And they bring back every single contentious item that was on there. Think about all the items we voted on.
No, that, I apologize, that, that won't happen because of statute of limitations on challenges to, um, any kind of elected positions, uh, recommendations or approvals. They have statute of limitations, uh, you have a lot of, um, protections that it wouldn't be open season for six or seven years of actions.
Okay, can you tell me what the statute of limitations is?
Well, it would depend, have there been verification actions? I, I, I wouldn't know, um. Like I said, I'm just giving you an opinion, you don't have to take it.
Well, I am very thankful for your opinion. Um, I think the information that's provided to us tonight is, uh, is a bomb, to say the least. It completely goes against everything we've been doing for the last number of years. And without knowing that statute of limitations, I'm not comfortable at all, at all proceeding. So effectively, effectively what we're getting at is here is this item was continued from the last meeting to this one, and now we can't vote on this one, and it's gonna come back for a third one. The inefficiency that presents to county staff, commissioners, and public is, is egregious.
Chair, if I may make a suggestion.
You, you can take action on this resolution, you can deny it. You, you can take action on it because it doesn't reflect what you want.
Oh, so our option here is not to provide clarity, but just to accept or deny the recommendation? That's, that is our, what's before us? Not to actually provide clarity, but to, um, vote on staff's interpretation or to vote for or not of staff's interpretation of the ordinance? That's why.
And provide, provide direction with your clarification, absolutely.
I mean, okay, if that's what we're here to do, um, then, I mean, I don't want to recreate the wheel here um, by providing direction, that's what I thought we were here to do, but, um, I mean, so we could, I could, I think I'm understanding a little bit. I'm a little dense sometimes. So what you're saying is, what we can do is we can take my motion off the table. We can vote on the original motion, right? Let's say that motion fails, we can provide direction to staff to create a new resolution with our recommendations to bring forward to be voted upon.
Correct.
Make a motion to just provide the direction that you want to staff tonight and, and and do we need a resolution for you to, for the direction to be provided?
I mean, I would like.
If, if, if there's a motion that, like, here's what we're saying, X, Y, and Z, and that's the line, this is our direction on how this is going to go. I mean, it's, that's basically what they're saying in this resolution.
Chair, if I may.
Oh, County Council, do you, do we need to have, I would guess bottom line, do we need to have an up or down vote on the original staff recommendation for the resolution? Would that be something we would want to do?
I, I would think procedurally what you want to do is, since we have a three-two approval right now amended, is to bring that back and withdraw that vote. Then go back to the original one that failed and give direction to staff because it failed. Um, it didn't, I don't think it got a second, correct?
No, it did get a second, we just didn't vote because we had a subsequent motion.
Vote on it, okay, then you could, okay, so it went from the original to the amended. The amended got approved, we can, um, bring that back, withdraw that approval, and finish the vote on the one as presented by staff, since that one did not fail.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Director Poblani, did you have some uh, input?
I I just wanted to clarify that um, in in my time working here for the county with. Um, many planning commission meetings at this point. I I can't say that I've ever seen the planning commission actually on the fly. Completely do the opposite of a resolution. There have been minor changes that have been made to language. I mean, I think that's the reason that that Reda's giving the advice that she's giving. So um, you know, as she's directing, you could withdraw that that second motion and then. Either make a subsequent second motion that clarifies, um, you know. Essentially, you you could make a a subsequent motion to deny the resolution and vote on that, or you could have no subsequent. And vote on the initial motion to approve. Then if it was denied, you could also subsequently give direction to staff to re-agendize the item. To then bring forward a new ambiguity determination with the specific provisions that the commission would like to see included.
Drew did a much better job than I, but that's exactly what I would suggest.
So if we back it up one, then we can actually make a subsequent motion. If that's, if that's the.
That's what Drew just said.
If you back it up, you don't need the subsequent motion because there's already a motion on the table to approve or deny the resolution and you can take the vote there. And then provide direction.
You could also add to it. Um, approve or deny and then add Duncan's resolution as instruction to staff.
Alternatively, the commission could then either decide to direct staff to bring back this item with a clarified. A staff report and associated resolution. Or the commission could direct staff to say, wait until ordinance updates are completed to clarify this. Um, it can remain in a state of ambiguity. Personally, I don't think that the language that um. Commissioner McIntosh has proposed actually clarifies the ambiguity within that code section. Because the code section still exists and it's still ambiguous. Because it doesn't address the nuanced terminology such as the applicant who has applied for. And it doesn't address whether that means a singular APN, multiple APNs or anything else. Um, so from my perspective, regardless, it remains ambiguous. So that's that's my two cents.
Right, so if we, if if you wanted to have contiguous covered, then you just need to state that. Contiguous means contiguous and allow those all to be included.
In a, in a recommend, in direction to staff. That will come back forth and then we will all vote on it again.
I think procedurally, right now, what we need to do is withdraw.
I withdraw my vote.
So so do we actually need a motion to withdraw the uh. Previous motion by one of the people who voted for it?
Is it to withdraw or to reopen? And then and then do we vote on that motion to withdraw it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I can't.
I make a motion, I make a motion to withdraw our last vote.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, now we make a vote on that motion.
We have a vote please.
Commissioner McIntosh, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Harper?
Aye.
Commissioner Flights?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall?
Aye.
And Chair Barrett?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now we're back to Commissioner Flights' original motion. To um, approve the staff recommendation and resolution twenty twenty-five.
Zero nine.
Oh nine, with my second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Fall?
Aye.
Commissioner Flights?
Aye.
Commissioner Harper?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
No.
And Chair Barrett?
No.
Thank you.
Chair, is is this the time to provide direction to staff?
Yeah, um, I mean, I I'd like to ask staff to provide some clarity at a meeting. Uh, date undetermined, to clarify the guidance. On whether we're waiting for the general plan updates to clear up any gray area or ambiguity. Or are we bringing it back to the commission to clear up any guidance or ambiguity?
Chair, are you asking for staff to give their opinion about when the appropriate timing is?
Yes, sir.
As soon as possible. Right, these, I mean, I um, in the staff documents, there was a particular farm in this opt-out zone. That was in communication with staff um, back in twenty twenty-one, right? This was with um, Kim Hunter about the interpretation of this. And the interpretation um, is that contiguous parcels um, are contiguous parcels, right? There's farms in this opt-out zone that based on recommendations from county staff. Have been investing and working towards projects. So, yeah, we need this to be moved to the very top of our agenda, I think. Um, like no farther than this next meeting, um, as soon as possible. Um, this is.
I mean, we we got uh, legal counsel's advice on what a parcel is, the code and ordinance is crystal clear, what a parcel is. I I don't see where the gray area is, but for the people that do. I certainly believe the next meeting is in order to get this cleared up once and for all and leave these people.
Chair, I I have a question for council. Um, so since this is different than the public notice. In terms of the ambiguity determination, I I do believe that you need another public notice, which would mean not the. Next meeting.
Correct, because you you you're you're bringing a different, a different item. As Drew said, this is not going to reflect what was brought to you today. So the public has a right to speak on it.
So the earliest available meeting then, after all public notices have been adhered to. Is that agreeable?
And with direction based on what's, like, the next resolution will be. Um, reinforcing the direction from the commission. Is that correct?
Well, you need to make the motion as to what that direction is going to be.
But once we make that motion, we provide that direction. That is the motion that will, that is the resolution that will come before us to be voted on? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
To reflect the changes that you all recommend from tonight's meeting.
Okay. Well, shall, do we, do we need to discuss the motion that we've voted upon further?
I think you need to put the motion forward and then.
Okay.
Then open it for discussion potentially.
I believe it would be moving that that language be um, staff direction. That you're giving staff direction to.
And so can I just? Do I, do I read the motion again, or can I just provide that the motion that we agreed upon? No, it was rejected, so we need to read it, reread it.
I I just think it, I just think it needs to be in terms of giving staff direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a actual decision by the planning commission.
So.
And and just be sure that Drew understands what that direction is. So it's very clearly articulated that Drew knows what his marching orders are.
Yeah, okay.
Chair, if I may, um, just for future reference, I think it would be cleaner. If the direction from the planning commission to staff was included into the motion. So to use this as a constructive example, there could have been a subsequent motion to deny the resolution with direction to staff. Clearly stated and that included um, for the vote. Rather than voting something down and then providing direction to staff. I'm not sure, Reda, if you can weigh in on whether there should be some consensus of the commission as it relates to the direction given to staff. Post um, vote.
I mean, we can make as many motions as we need, right?
So, so am I correct in hearing Director Poblani in that? If we had a subsequent motion that stated just what he said, we would be done and dusted with this issue?
Staff would have had to come back with a, a subsequent resolution.
Right, depending on what the direction from the commission was, then we would bring the item back, same same difference.
I guess.
Right, because Drew Drew takes direction from the majority of the board. So does the majority of the board have a recommendation to what they want brought back in the next proposed reso?
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
And as long as that's clear to Drew.
Shall I push it, bring it forward?
So. Can I just ask one question on that? So um, I do think that I'd like to see us make a clear. Determination of of what is Drew's asking for as far as the applicant goes. I think that the other part of it, you're clear on what your intent is, I think. But we do need to resolve the applicant side of it. And so if we're saying that the applicant is not the person who applied for it with the water board, but it is tied to an APN. We just need to make sure that that is clear in in the direction and how. I think we just need to spell it out.
So in honoring uh, the property rights of the initial applicant. Who um, applied for the water board um, prior to these opt-out zones. In honor of that applicant's rights, the um. The rights to um, cannabis cultivation, this ordinance shall be connected to that property.
So Chair, if I may, again.
Yes, please.
My suggestion then would be, if you want to. Clarify this ambiguity, that you direct staff to bring an ordinance update. That then clearly specifies with the language in code, what. What, who the applicant is and any of the elements that continue to remain ambiguous. Um, that it be addressed with updated language. Again, if we just do it by resolution and throw all these other concepts into that resolution, we haven't changed the code.
What concepts are you referring to?
Exactly what you're asking for, that, you know.
The the clarity that a uh, um, a legal parcel is a legal parcel. And that there's no place in the ordinance that stipulates any regulations on them. I'm not throwing anything into this. I am just providing clarity on what is written in the ordinance.
However, again, you know, and I I don't mean to be argumentative. This code section refers to an applicant, to your point, Commissioner McIntosh. This code section does not at, in any place of A seven refer to a legal parcel or otherwise. It simply says, an applicant who has applied for. So we are then, you know, we're we're in, we're continuing to create interpretations of code without clarifying it. That's how I see it as ambiguous because we're correlating an applicant, which is a non-defined term in seventeen four-three. To another defined term that doesn't reference the word applicant, which I think is the point of contention from my perspective. And one of the elements that continues to remain ambiguous. Hence my suggestion to give direction to staff to update that code section so that it can be clear, crystal clear.
Cause it seems like at the last planning commission meeting, applicant was not what was on discussion. It was, it was legal parcel. And moving to different APNs. And so this, you know, really pinpointing on applicant is something that. Staff is really drilling down on today, but not at the last meeting.
Oh, it became an issue when you reverse staff recommendation. It wouldn't have been an issue before.
It wouldn't be an issue before if these, um, if the farm was not allowed to move their APN. Or move their license from one APN to the next.
I think it does present a significantly different scenario if what we're creating now is. As we talk through in discussion, the potential of six hundred plus new cultivation sites. And the potential for any of them to expand beyond ten thousand square feet.
Six hundred cultivation sites? What are you, what are you talking about?
So we we talked through, right? There's a hun, there's roughly a hundred and twenty grandfathered APNs. Or applicants who applied for enrollment under the twenty fifteen order. The purpose of the ambiguity item was twofold. One, to clarify if they could relocate onto an adjacent APN. In conflict with the fact pattern and process associated with the water board to list all of the APNs. The second issue is that then we are enabling them to expand beyond the canopy square footage. That was listed in the twenty fifteen, uh, in the enrollment under the twenty fifteen order. So again, I, my suggestion would be if we wanna clarify this, then it should be done in an ordinance update. If if kind of what you're pointing at is what you wanna see go into effect.
So if you're moving it from one parcel to another, you're not actually enlarging anything. It's essentially the exact size. It's the same amount of farms. It's just moving from one parcel to another.
No, the way you could, you could acquire, so that one hundred and twenty existing ones. As Drew pointed out earlier, if you had just roughly four parcels around you. And you purchased those four parcels, that's another four hundred and eighty parcels plus a hundred and twenty, that's six hundred parcels. And each one of those parcels as a separate parcel can apply for some sort of cannabis cultivation license. That's how you get.
How many cannabis licenses are left to give out?
Three hundred and twenty-ish.
Pardon me, isn't that a slippery slope? Like these, these three parcels. Or these, these, these parcels can buy up every property in their neighborhood that's already owned by other people. That's owned by the Forest Service, the federal government. You're talking about like the most fear mongering extreme of situations.
It is a worst case scenario, but I mean, it is.
So like, you're talking about people that have no money anymore to buy up adjoining properties either.
Correct, a commodity that is, you can't give it away.
Can we come back to whether this is better to address this during the zoning ordinance update that we're going to be going through? Or if we want staff to come back to us with an updated ordinance at our, our next appropriate meeting with the public notices? Can we please provide that direction?
I mean, I would like, I would like my, my direction to hold. Um, I think it's very clear. I think it's very clear and I would like staff to come back with a resolution and findings. Um, um, that we can vote upon based on the motion that we voted upon.
I agree.
And does that carry the majority of the planning commission?
Yes.
But without clarity on exactly what Drew needs to have in it.
Well, the, well, the clarity is to adhere to the ordinance as written, right?
So.
Chair, if I may, then I I think that, you know, to the the points that Commissioner McIntosh are making. Um, if the conclusion is that it's already crystal clear in code and that was the basis to deny this motion. Then I don't see the need to bring it back.
Agreed.
That's the opinion of the majority.
Yeah, that was the interpretation of um, prior planners. That was the direction given to farmers um, over the last number of years as they purchased farms from a prior applicant. And we were allowed to purchase that farm and exchange their license from the, um, within the county. Right, that that, you know, the the letter of, of um. Of this ordinance is how it has been exercised up until this has been brought forth.
I don't believe that grandfathered parcels were allowed to exchange. Were they?
Exchange what?
Parcels within an opt-out area?
Within the limitations code section, none of this is clear. And that was my hope that we would clarify this with this ambiguity determination. Basically, you know, you've you've voted down the resolution. Um, and so at this point, essentially. And so at this point, essentially, given that this is an exception, it's it's not a shall, it's a may, and I've previously confirmed that with county council. So then for any license applications that are applied for, then the discretionary authority to approve or deny those applications would come to me. And then the ability to exercise administrative remedies on either side of that fence to appeal the director's decision would be able to happen. And then the decision, if appealed, would come before you as an appeal of the director's decision specific to a singular project as opposed to this never-ending ambiguous confusion that we engage in.
Well, fortunately, there's only a small handful of farms within this area. So I'm anticipating it not being a lot of work for all of us.
Not in the short term, for sure.
Agreed. So then we're not bringing this back to the commission? We're finished with this topic? Is that what I'm getting from the consensus of the commission, especially since that's legal counsel's concern?
I think that's the cleanest way, the cleanest approach is to, yeah, just follow through with with what we voted upon.
Okay, so then we're finished with this topic? I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Does that have three?
Yes, it does.
Well, we we voted, oh, yes, okay.
That was withdrawn.
Direction.
That was withdrawn.
Well, your motion was voted upon.
But your motion was withdrawn.
Yeah, we're just talking about the direction to staff now.
Correct.
Or two?
Yes.
So just to be clear that the record is clear to anyone who listens, the reso as presented by staff failed for a majority, and that's the action for tonight.
Thank you for the clarification. So then we're going to move on with our regular calendar. Do we have any planning commissioner reports?
No.
No one? Okay, I would like to direct staff to bring the item of blight as discussed by that member of public this earlier in the meeting. Is that a opportunity for us to get that before the commission for discussion?
May clarify your request. Are you asking for there to be a blight ordinance created?
Blight ordinance discussion, if there isn't one, is there one? Maybe that's the first question I should ask. Is there one?
Right, there is not a a blight ordinance that addresses, I think, the concerns of.
Remember public?
The commenter. There there are references to the word blight in county code, but there is no blight ordinance. So if that's the direction to staff, perhaps it would be helpful to have a bit of discussion about the scope of what you would like to see in in ordinance and or to bring it back for a discussion topic to then give more clear direction to staff.
Does it need to be its own standalone ordinance, or can we address it in the zoning code update?
Great question.
Because it's not currently in chapter seventeen, and chapter seventeen is what we're updating. It would need to be a a new effort.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So then can the to direct staff to bring that back for discussion as you suggested, Director Poblaney?
As a as a discussion item.
Yes.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
I I think more of an information item, just to let us know, like, like you said, the red bluff ordinance, like what what the issues are, what the options could be, where it would rank in the staff's time, because I know staff has a ton of stuff to do and we're short on help. Just, you know, that kind of discussion.
Yeah, that that's no problem, and, you know, I'll do my best to agendize an item that allows for, you know, significant discussion. And honestly, it it may not fall under chapter seventeen. So we'll dig into all of that in in that discussion item.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to staff for all you do. I know it's a huge workload with a small staff. So there's no other planning commission reports. Can we have a deputy director of community development reports?
Chair, if I may, I would like to make a comment in that section.
Yes, sir, please.
So with the retirement of Ed Presley, which was effective today, Drew Poblaney is appointed as of today the interim planning director. I, as the CEO, will assume the duties of the community development department head responsibilities until such time that we can fill the community development director position. And just for your information, we also have an open recruitment for the planner position. And we are in the final stages of that recruitment and and plan to provide a tentative job offer soon.
Perfect. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your new position. If there's nothing else, can we adjourn the meeting, please? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.